The 7th of November, 2020 is now called order. Before we begin, I'd like to announce I will be adjourning this meeting tonight in memory of Rosemary Pierce, a longtime Montesorino resident and former city manager who passed away on December 29th. Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible)
Next order of business, we have a presentation. I would like to invite Forrest Williams, board member of the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association, to speak about the STEM competition before we present the certificates of recognition to our 2019 winners from the city of Montesorino.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor Lohr, and councilmembers. We thank you for recognizing your home. Each of the city of the towns, their STEM projects have done a great job. They compete at the local level with the Santa Clara level, they compete at the state level, and they compete at the international level. We are a premier science fair organization which strives to invoke, promote, and encourage youngsters to pursue STEM as a medium of career. We know that rules are put in place to govern, they're put in place to guidance and direct us for the benefit of human kind. This is an extension of what we do. We encourage technology, but we want them to know also that there's another part of life beyond technology, and that they must come to a government to understand how to best implement, not here, that would be successful and useful and meaningful for human kind. Our motivation stems from many careers that are in the technology environment. I'm an engineer, I've worked for IBM for 35 years, a city council member for eight years, a planning commissioner for eight years, a school board member for 12 years, working with the community to understand and convey those things that we need to for our children. There's nothing like the love of the child, to share that love with the child in the sense that they will be taking over from us, and if there's care that's expressed to them, then they will respond in time. So, this evening is a monumental evening for us, that you would take the time to recognize the students from your city that are making, that will make contributions to the future. So we are dedicated to this task, and we invite you to come to our science fair. We'll send you a notice to that effect by any means. So, thank you very much for the opportunity, and I know you're looking forward to the awards too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll leave some cards for you.
What is your question?
It's in March 2020, I mean, 2020 now. Every year around March, either we select the 11th or, depending on availability of facility at the convention center and the center of day, but it will be in March, but you will never know just right back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cavita, would you like to come up and speak to us a little bit about your project? Thank you. This is Cavita Murphy, one of our winners.
So first, I'd just like to thank everybody for acknowledging me here tonight. It really means a lot. I've lived in Montesorino my whole life, and it's a great community, and I'm really honored to be mentioned today. So my project goes about in vegetables, you have the bacteria that are on the vegetables, and when I was thinking one, most of us don't cook ourselves before we eat them. And there's a huge problem of bacteria becoming resistant to different antibodies, since they have been, in fact, two different antibiotics, since it continues use, the bacteria become resistant. So my project was determining whether more heat-resistant bacteria are found on conventionally grown or organically grown spinach. The conventionally grown spinach would be any kind which are treated with bacteriocides, pesticides, and the same with that. So yeah, I finished the project, I used things called primers, it's small sequences of DNA, which would detect how the prevalence of these genes of the bacteria in the two different examples, and my original hypothesis was that the conventionally grown spinach would have less of these bacteria since they had prior been treated with the bacteriocide and the pesticide, and the hypothesis was correct at the end. And yeah, I think the great thing about science in general is that you get to, it's not an easy process. I used to go in thinking that you have an idea, and you implement that idea, and there might be a small couple of setbacks. Well, I found that it's a lot more difficult than you might think, and even though you have a better plan, it doesn't often go as planned. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, that's wonderful. Now, I'm going to stay there, and then keep it here. Please stay there. Do you want me to picture? So, Cavita, on behalf of the city of Montesorino, we would like to present you with the certificate of recognition and your fantastic endeavors.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you, congratulations again. Are there any changes to the orders of the day? All right, moving on to oral communications, are there members of the public who wish to speak on items not on the agenda? Please fill out a blue card and hand it to City Park.
Thank you.
There might be all, sorry. I'd like to, first we have, I'd like to, council would like to recognize Jack Lucas. Would you like to come up and speak?
This is Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I am Jack Lucas, I reside at 17171 Xena Avenue in Montesorino, and one thing to say is I have served on the board at City Council, or trustee City Council, for five terms. I served Montesorino as its mayor for five terms. An enriching experience, I hear it about. In fact, I told my, one of my legacies was, my art council brought that sign in Montesorino logo, and I told my fellow councilmembers, I knew that duct tape would hold it up. And it has. Since leaving the council, I was bounced out with a term limit, except the five term. I jumped over to West Valley Mission Community College. I am currently a trustee, I represent trustee area five, which includes the entire city of Montesorino, Saratoga, half of Los Gatos, around the west end of the valley. And really, I'm here on behalf of the board because I would like to congratulate your new city manager. We've always had an excellent relationship with Montesorino, as well as the other six cities that comprise the West Valley Mission Community College district, and we look forward to continuing that leadership through Mr. Leonardi as well as the current council. I would like to make this one quick, one off time. Andrew usually will give me a hook. The one comment I would like to make is, I understand Mr. Leonardi came in with a very democratic three-two vote to serve my city as its city manager, and that's democracy. My only, my hope after being in city government for 37 years, I'm currently in my fifth term at West Valley Mission Community College, we don't have term limits. I won't be around that long. But what I learned is, when you have a foot vote, albeit whatever it is, I've always, if I'm on the end of the minority, what I've always done and has kept me healthy in politics and governance is, you join the majority, you come together as a team, you work together to the betterment of the entity in which you serve, and I implore my council to do that same thing. Make Montesorino the great city that it has been ever since I moved in, and that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Council recognizes Stan Weitzman.
Mayor Lawler, I'm Lawler, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Stan Weitzman. I am a member of the Los Gatos Lions, and the Los Gatos, that's in, I'm the secretary of both boards. I've worked with Steve quite a bit over the last few years, and he's been a tremendous asset to us in terms of just helping us navigate through the city, and he's just, he knows his stuff, and we really appreciate everything he's done for us. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Council recognizes Diane Chandler.
I'm also at the Veterans Memorial Foundation, and Steve has supported Veterans Memorial in many ways, showing his support of the local community and his patriotism. On his generosity, including his colorblindness, his location downtown on Main Street for an information center, and we shall always be grateful for his dedication and service.
Thank you very much. Council recognizes Suzanne Craig. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Does anyone want to speak? Sorry, never mind. Council recognizes my friend Dex.
Happy New Year, Council. I won't be as soft-spoken as my board members over here. So I have the privilege of being involved with Los Gatos and Montesorino, a resident in Montesorino for almost 35 years, but working in Los Gatos is the president emeritus of the Los Gatos Veterans Memorial and Support Foundation. I just came here to speak in favor of Steve Leonardi, to tell you and all of us in Montesorino, I think we really have a gem here. I know he's dedicated to the city, and he was dedicated to the town, so we're very happy to have him. He's been so generous to our board, I think Diane alluded to the fact that we have the only space on, in downtown Los Gatos, on frontage on Main Street, and we don't pay rent. That's because Steve owns the building. So Steve, for the public to know, I just want to say thank you for that, and welcome to the city.
Thank you. Council recognizes Nancy Pearson.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to let you know that I, as a resident in Montesorino, and I happen for going, hmm, almost 10 years now, I moved here from Willoplen, prior to that, Los Gatos, prior to that, San Francisco, San Valley, Idaho, and I grew up in Saratoga, so I've been around in some other places too. Reason I say that is, in all of those places, I never once knew the name of a city manager. But Steve Leonardi, we know your name, and more importantly, we know your reputation, and we're so happy that you are the city manager, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Council recognizes Alice Hoagland.
I'm very grateful for the opportunity to address the council. This is my very first time here in this building. I've often flown by, it's really a fascinating inside and outside. I'm here this evening as a member, committee member of the Veterans Memorial Association and Board for Silicon Valley. It's located in Los Gatos, I'm sure you've seen the new memorial that is located now in Los Gatos. We were, I was invited to attend and speak at the memorial dedication, and that's how I got to know this fine group. And in the process of being part of the Los Gatos Veterans Memorial, I got to know Steve Leonardi, who I admire very much, and I'm here to tell you that I think he's a wonderful, he has been a delightful member of the past Los Gatos, and now I'm sure that he's going to be doing a fine job for Montesorino, and I'm very happy that he's here among us, and I appreciate your listening to me, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Council recognizes Brian Mekachuk.
Hi, Brian Mekachuk, 175009 P S Reno. I, as well as the others, want to welcome Steve to the city of Montesorino. I know that it's been a bit controversial, but I think that's, we're very fortunate to have Steve here. He knows the community, he knows the town of Los Gatos, city of Montesorino, so welcome, Steve.
Thank you. And council recognizes Stephen Gurwaiya.
Gurwaiya.
Thank you.
Steve was just bought. All right, good evening, Mayor, and fellow councilmembers. Stephen Gurwaiya here. I am the publisher of Los Gatos Living Magazine and Saratoga Spotlight Magazine. If you know the magazine, you'll know that there is a mayor's corner in each magazine, and each month there's a mayor's contribution. I leave the platform open to the mayor because they know better than I do as far as what is important to the community, and it is really all about the community, and what, how to help the community understand what's going on in the town or the city. Steve's been amazing in the information and content that he's provided every single month, I just want to start with that. Outside of my publishing job, I'm also a member of the Los Gatos Kiwanis Club, and Steve's a member of the club, and he has been a huge member in participation and for the betterment of the community. I don't, should kind of reveal your, who you, what? He's a bunny, he's a man of the bunny suit. It makes a lot of very small children, families and children, very happy. I don't know if I should have said that or not, Diane, anyway. That in itself is a huge, huge, tremendous way to bring the community together and make a lot of people very happy. Outside of that, you know, his involvement in patriotism in our community, which we need, we, I strongly support, and we're a part of really bringing the community to understand that, we're in this together, and Steve has been, I don't know how many people really know this, but outside of this, Steve has independently taken on the responsibility or the gift to our community to look out for flagpoles and restore flagpoles and make the community happy, whether it's in a public area or a residential area. I also serve on the board of the Veterans Foundation of Los Gatos. I am not a veteran, and I strongly believe in our men and women in the military. If we all did just a little bit and helped them in healing, and also appreciation for their service to our country and preserving our liberties and our freedoms, I think that Steve does a huge job in supporting our efforts and the community in that way as well. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I think that's it for our oral communications. We have no written communications, so we'll launch the consent calendar. Are there any councilmembers who have questions on any items in the consent calendar?
I have a question. I wonder, can we discuss those items, or maybe we just need to pull one list?
If you'd like to pull something, sure.
Pull one list and just start the chat. Can we talk about an amount?
Yes, go ahead.
So, one of the items was the pageant lawsuit shows up, and I noticed that this is the second time that it's shown up recently for a few thousand dollars. I'm not questioning the amount, I'm just questioning whether we can get an accounting on the amount to date. I know that a previous council, you know, essentially granted all of these services and so forth, but I, it's just, this seems to be just a rolling figure, it just keeps rolling by. Is there any way we can get an accounting to date of how much we've actually spent on this line item?
Sure answer, we don't have that information in front of us, but yes, that is something that...
Come back with it, some other, some future point.
Steve.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Leavere, are you looking for an accounting since inception on the case?
Yeah, I'm just, it's prior to me being involved, so I just don't even know what the magnitude of the number is. If it's rolling by, and I've seen this, I've lied on here several times, just being on the council, and it's always a few thousand dollars here, a few thousand dollars there. I'm curious how much the city has spent on this so far.
Mr. Rubin, we have that since inception.
I mean, all of the warrant lists are publicly available, so someone would have to go and compile that.
May I ask the same question about the same item? The charges that we have, are they for services rendered, the discovery, and not any type of settlement yet?
These are, these would be costs that were billed as a safety services rendered.
And just to follow up, what are the projected charges going forward in this litigation? If you could get some idea on that, maybe in closed session?
I would prefer to answer those kind of questions in close second.
All right, then, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I have one more right of my word.
All right.
Or the cost-sharing agreement that it's going to be negotiated, should that item possibly be in a closed session? Because it contains the authority we're giving our city manager, you know, it's an authority to negotiate. I would think we'd rather keep those amounts in closed session.
Which item are you discussing?
The cost, the recommendation of, so I have two questions. This is, I don't know if it's a thing, cost-sharing agreement with the town of Los Gatos. This is a recommendation to authorize a city management associate. So I have two questions, one is whether it should have been a closed session item, and the second is, you had a chance to put an agreement and recommend the following bit of agreement in Los Gatos.
So, the only agreement that I've looked at is this cost-sharing agreement. Now, I wish the city engineer was here to answer this particular question that you have, as to whether or not, the agreement that is before you is an agreement to authorize the town to procure the project, enter into an agreement with the contractor, and then essentially split the costs for the cost-sharing agreement break down.
There's an agreement between the town of Los Gatos and the city, one, so it's...
Yes, so the town...
Have you looked at that agreement and is that acceptable?
I have looked at that agreement, that agreement is the one that is attached to your agenda packet, so. And basically, the anticipated cost share would be approximately 50/50 with the town, being entitled to some overhead costs for engineering, construction, and other administrative services. I think the city engineer would be able to speak more.
Yeah, I think, thank you, but I wasn't interested in the numbers, I was more interested in the legality of it, but formatting, will it protect the city from any potential exposure other than...
Yeah, I have looked at it, I have actually made recommended changes, which were approved by the town to address indemnification in terms of the city, so I believe that it's perfectly protected.
All right, then, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So...
Okay, so let me just clarify, so this would be to approve the entire consent calendar? So I have, I have a motion by councilmember Alahi, a second by councilmember Turner.
Oh, and actually, I recall what the exact issue was with respect to why the recommendations were raised the way they were. Originally, I had recommended to the city engineer that we request changes be made by the town, those changes were ultimately accepted at the time publication of the agenda, the town had not responded, which is why the recommendation was raised the way that it was.
So you all should be able to vote now. Okay, so all votes are in, and the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. All right, moving on, we don't have any public hearings, there's no unfinished business, moving on to new business. Item four, discussion and possible response to citizen complaint regarding the Brown Act violation. Sergio, is that applicable?
There's not exactly a staff report to this, but as you're all aware, the city council and the city clerk by email received a letter from an anonymous citizen alleging a Brown Act violation on the basis of, the city council is, you know, stymied for lack of a better word, attempts by the public to, you know, come and present public criticism. Typically, the Brown Act, in response to these types of complaints, authorizes a process by which citizens can sue over Brown Act violations. They would normally have to provide a cease and desist letter that tells the council, you shall not, you know, we ask you to not commit these violations in the future. That's not exactly what this complaint is, so the council's not obligated to respond in any particular way, but if the council does want to respond, you know, my typical recommendation would be that you adopt, the Brown Act provides what's called an unconditional commitment not to commit a violation of the same type in the future. So if you do that, you know, basically it puts out to the public that, you know, the council recognizes that there's been a complaint, that the council's taken this action to make sure that violations don't happen moving forward, and, you know, it's sort of up to the council, because based on the content of the letter, it's not clear that there actually was a Brown Act violation. But again, you know, if the council's inclined to do anything, adopting an unconditional commitment is typically the safest course of action, which is why it's on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open us up to the council, and I'd like to start with councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Lawler, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to say, can you guys hear me? We have had so much change this last year, a new city attorney, a new city manager, and now we have our new mayor, and I really hope that as a group that we can get back together, as a group of citizens demonstrating respect for one another and care for our community. The night in question, Ed Turner was taken aback and offended by some things that a woman was saying. He interrupted with an expletive. This was a visceral response to this woman's accusations. He then apologized to the council for the outburst. Given the apology, I felt we could move on. I was the mayor at that time, so I was running the meeting. So I wish to take the first step here. Perhaps I should have paid more attention to the outburst. Hindsight is always 20/20. I am not a professional referee, although I did teach in a prison school. Perhaps I didn't manage that interchange very well, and for that, I sincerely apologize. So tonight, I'm asking all of you to forgive and to move forward. Let us bring our community together, let us show respect for one another, and give the benefit of the doubt to those who make mistakes. There are so many things that our current city council wants to accomplish. We are in a new year with a new mayor, with a new city attorney, with a new city manager. Our councils, our councilmembers and staff are very capable professionals. We can leverage our experience and our expertise, but we still leave all of you behind us. Give us the opportunity to focus on exploring solutions to real problems and implementing process improvements based on best practices and best known methods. So now, let's focus on urgent issues to improve our community. Thank you so much, Mayor Lawler, for giving me the opportunity to say something.
You're welcome. Councilmember Leavere, would you like to say anything?
I have a process question, so I know this topic came up in closed session, but I'm curious how it actually got into open session. So, you know, so my understanding from the previous meeting was that you had to have a majority of the council bring a topic to the public discussion.
So, this ended up on the agenda because councilmember Lupe, that last meeting requested discussion of this item.
So tonight, I'm asking all of you to forgive and to move forward. Let us bring our community together. Let us show respect for one another and give the benefit of the doubt to those who make mistakes. There are so many things that our current city council wants to accomplish. We are in a new year with a new mayor, with a new city attorney, with a new city manager. Our councils, our council members and staff are very capable professionals. We can leverage our experience and our expertise, but we still leave all of you behind us. Give us the opportunity to focus on exploring solutions to real problems and implementing process improvements based on best practices and best known methods. So now, let's focus on urgent issues to improve our community. Thank you so much, Mayor Lawler, for giving me the opportunity to say something.
You're welcome. Councilmember LeBeve, would you like to say anything?
I have a process question. So I know this topic came up in closed session, but I'm curious how it actually got into open session. So, you know, so my understanding from the previous meeting was that you had to have a, a majority of the council bring a topic to the public discussion.
So, this was, ended up on the agenda because Councilmember Lupe, that last meeting, requested discussion of this item as a future agenda item.
That's not.
Majority of the council bringing a closed session item forward, though.
And this, this was not a, a matter that was actually ever discussed in closed session. Although I did provide some analysis of the decision to the council, the item.
Okay.
Councilmember LeBeve?
Yeah, I really appreciate Mayor, former Mayor Turner's statement. I think it is important for us to all move forward and get on with the business of the city on Montesereno. I also appreciate the former mayor, Jack Lucas's statement. And I welcome all the members of the elected board here speaking on behalf of the city. Steve has been a politician here, and the stands, that when you feel strongly about something, you have to take a stand. So we voted, you know, we're the ones who are opposed to having you become the city manager, but that's part of the mandate that the city requires of us, that you walk toward our conscience, we decide what we think is the best interest of the city. At this point, Steve is here. I welcome him wholeheartedly. I will work with him, and I'm looking forward to the best that we can order to get the city on Montesereno. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think the reason that I requested that we bring this issue forward is because it was a concern that was raised. It was discussed that the council would do well to take this matter seriously and that we should make a, first of all, we should talk about it, and second of all, that we should consider making a response. I think there has been change, and we have learned from this issue that came up in, in heated discussion over an important topic with the reach codes, I believe it was. And it's kind of surprising that everyone was as involved with that discussion as we would hope they were. And it's great to see, it was great at that meeting to have so many people who were speaking to the issue because they felt passionately about it. It's great to see the turnout here tonight. I think it's a great welcome for Steve. I'll save my comments on that for later, but it's really nice to see everybody here. I hope that this year, we can take what we have learned last year as a young council, and we're going to move the whole city's agenda forward.
Okay, thank you. All right, it's, I'll open it now to public comment.
Hi, I have one more.
Oh.
I have just one more question. By agreeing to cease and desist, if, you know, tomorrow one of us is rude to somebody, does that violate a cease and desist? And what consequences does that have on the city? Because now we have a cease and desist against ourselves, that we won't treat it after.
In, in short, a council member putting a rude to a member of the public is not, is not going to violate a unconditional commitment that the council makes to, you know, avoid violations based on prohibiting public criticism. That's, that's certainly not going to be an issue. You know, this sort of unconditional commitment, you know, would only be violated, basically, if the council took actions that would, you know, prohibiting a speaker from, you know, their First Amendment rights to speak in public during the appropriate period of time. You know, every person gets several minutes, you know, during the open session forum item. Every person gets a chance to speak during, you know, a regular agenda item. Basically, the purpose of this is to signal the public that the council's committed to, you know, respecting public criticism. I, I don't think that it's likely that there be any sort of liability that would incur to the city as a result of adopting this.
Yeah, I just want to be clear that this may not reflect that from now on we are prohibited from doing.
All right, now I'll open it up to public comment. Council recognizes Susanna Craig.
Hi there, my name is Susanna Craig. I live on Island Avenue. That woman that Councilmember Turner referenced was me. I actually had an email from various people of a statement that Councilmember Turner sent that was not even handed in any way. When I tried to approach Councilmember Turner, she basically turned around and told me that I was fake news. So, but that's aside. I didn't realize that a council member had written another email was sent to me with this agenda item. I didn't realize that it could possibly be a Brown Act, uh, Brown Act law violation. So I am evaluating with legal counsel at what step I want to take. And this is a statement that I'd like to say. Councilmember Turner has violated the Brown Act. She has done this multiple times. The Brown Act violation is just part of the issue that we have with this council. Councilmember Turner has been part of the council for her second term. She should know better. The council, in this particular case, by not reprimanding or censoring Councilmember Turner, the entire city council is condoning and supporting her violations of the code of ethics. This council should take immediate action and censor Councilmember Turner. That is my request. Thank you. Oh, and thank you so much for the bit. Omari, I really love it. Thank you.
All right, we're going back to council for discussion. We have a, we talked about the, we have a motion to approve the, we want to talk about the letter. That we, that you didn't have any comments about the letter? Anything you'd like to submit?
Got it.
You may go, yeah. Councilmember Turner?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to present to the council some changes that I'd like to make to the, to the letter that I had spoken with the council about. And the first one has to say that the city council of the city of Montesereno denies all the allegations to the extent that your correspondence is intended to be a request to cease and desist in order to avoid unnecessary litigation and without admitting any violation of the Brown Act, the city council of the city of Montesereno hereby unconditionally commits that it will cease and desist and will not engage in the challenged action as described above. That is the, that is the modification that I sent to Attorney.
So, for the council's benefit, the language that Councilmember Turner is suggesting would be to change the third paragraph of the letter. It would be to add a sentence at the beginning. I'd love to put this on the board, but unfortunately, we don't have our computer in front of us today that connects to that. It would be to add, the city council, the city monastery denies all the allegations to that third paragraph to the first sentence. And then to the last sentence, instead of ending and not repeat the challenged, past action as described above, it would read, and not engage in the challenged action as described above. So those are the minor modifications there.
All right. Do we have any comments? Councilmember Ollahi?
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with those changes. I, I talked to him since the former Mayor Turner formally apologized. If you're going to add a paragraph in there, the former mayor has personally apologized for, for, it's some, some language.
Well, I, I can need to, you need to be very serious to what I apologize for, right?
Yeah, that's, that's what.
I, I apologize for, for not having taken, for not being a professional referee and that maybe I didn't manage the interchange well, that there was no Brown Act violation.
Councilmember LeBeve, any comments?
Uh, no.
Councilmember LeBeve?
I'm not too bad tonight.
I'd like to say that I approve the letter with these, these changes, and I make a motion to approve the letter.
To approve the letters with the amendments.
With the amendments.
Described by Councilmember Turner. We have most.
Including the apology of Ed Turner.
I think we need to actually specify what that language is. And that there's already a motion on the floor.
I think, I think the apology can just, it's in the, it's in the document.
Does it have any legal bearing?
I don't, it just say that it would have any legal bearing. The form of the letter is actually prescribed by the, by the government code. And basically, when the city adopts an unconditional commitment, it's supposed to be substantially similar in form to the letter, to the form that's prescribed by the government code. So, to the extent that we can leave our modifications to the minimal desire by council, probably best.
So I do have a motion by Mayor Lawler and a second by Councilmember Lupe. We should be able to vote. Okay, I have all votes in. And it passes four-zero-one with one abstention. It's Councilmember Ollahi. All right, on to committee and commission reports. Does anybody have anything to propose?
No, thankfully, no.
Yep.
No, the committee needs over.
All right, on to Councilmember comments. Councilmember LeBeve, would you like to begin?
Yes, I just wanted to, to add that the last time you met, and you weren't here, we had a meeting which carried out. And one of the things that I requested from you is to agendize the auditor to come on board and speak to the council. And also, the, the Clear God Project, and also Jack Lucas's website. Those are the three things that I asked for.
Yeah, I wanted to take this opportunity to extend my formal welcome to Stephen Leonardo, City Manager. I know you have experience from our side of the table, and I know that's going to help you understand the challenges that we face as a council. That said, you have the unenviable position of getting to walk the fine line of providing excellent service to the citizens of Montesereno, creating a great and supportive working environment for the city staff, and to do that while answering to five different bosses here, putting cats on the city council. I see Montesereno facing several key challenges this year. This isn't an exhaustive list, but we need to begin by making sure that we ensure the right choices are made for hiring and retaining staff. We need to address the moving targets of the pension funding that has been changed on us and figure out what's going on with that and what may happen in the future. We need to budget for the proper level of city services without letting costs spiral out of control. We need to prepare to address the challenges that the state keeps creating regarding housing density. And we need to continue to address fire and earthquake safety concerns. I think while doing this, you're going to have to show some great diplomacy and some caution in your communications to avoid the missteps which could enroil Montesereno in further litigation. We've been through that with former mayors and city managers. More than ten years ago, we're still dealing with the financial repercussions of that. So I think one of your key missions and challenges is to be to make sure nothing like that happens on your watch. As you well know, you were an unconventional and a controversial choice for this, this position. The majority of this council advocated hard for you, and they put their faith in you. And ultimately, this whole council is extremely invested in your success. So let's work together. Let's take advantage of your experience and your connections. Let's leverage the great staff that we have here at the city. Let's build a quality operation to serve the constituents of Montesereno. So I look forward to working with you this year to keep Montesereno on a stable and sustainable track.
I mean, it's some initial comments, but you have a celebrity city manager now? Same photograph, it's been used four times in the city somewhere. Hope you don't let it get to your head there.
It was a good picture, though.
It was a good picture, honestly.
And finally, I'd like to welcome our new city manager, Steve Leonardo. I am already impressed with his enthusiasm and attention to detail, and I look forward to working with him to accomplish many good things for Montesereno and our residents. I'd also like to thank our former mayor for her hard work and leadership this past year, and I'd like to thank my respected fellow council members for selecting me as the new mayor. I am honored to serve our community and sit on this council with them. We may not always agree, but I believe in this council, for we all bring unique perspectives and want what is best for our residents. I look forward to working with them, our city manager, city staff, and city attorney, in tackling important issues, building operational excellence, and providing top services to our residents. With that, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Lawler. So I do not have an official report this evening, but I would just like to say thank you to the community of Montesereno for the warm welcome. I felt welcome all week with visitors stopping by at the office, delivering boxes of candy for staff and welcoming me in person, as well as the council's comments this evening. Thank you very much. I feel very welcome coming on board, as well as the members of the public who chose to come in this evening and say some nice things. I'm looking forward to also a very good year of the council, the staff, and the city manager working together in harmony to serve the good people of Montesereno, as was stated by a couple of different council members. There are a lot of items that could be coming forward on the agenda, a lot of, a lot of challenges, and we will be working together to resolve those and to maintain and improve the quality of life for the people in Montesereno. And I have another announcement to make this evening. There was a friend of our community, a little over a week ago, they passed away. Her name was Rosemary Phillips Pierce. Rosemary was a, she became a Montesereno resident in the nineteen-sixties after working in Washington, DC in the Pentagon. Fascinating story. She began working for the city of Montesereno, doing whatever was needed to be done. She kind of came in as office help. She had such a strong work ethic that she essentially rose to the level of city manager, a position that I am in now. It's kind of ironic that she had passed in the last week and I was hired for this position. She held the position of city manager from nineteen eighty-six through nineteen ninety-three until she retired in ninety-three. That was a year before our clerk, Ms. Chalamango's, was our longest-tenured employee. During her tenure with the city of Montesereno, Rosemary was instrumental in moving the city hall operations from the building next door, which was our old post office, most recently remembered by most of us, to this facility, which used to be the Red Cross facility. And at the time, that was a big deal for that to occur. And Jack Lucas, who was here earlier, former mayor, had the opportunity to work with Rosemary Phillips Pierce. One of Rosemary's daughters came into city hall this week, and they brought us a copy of Thomas Engels's book, The Battle for the Peaceful Mountain. This was written in nineteen eighty-two. It's a memento that she had saved all these years. And for those of you who don't know, Admiral Thomas Engels was the founder of the city of Montesereno. And this starts at day one, from the very beginning, when they decided why Montesereno should not become part of Los Angeles. And then, it's firm today, although we are great neighbors and we share a lot of resources. But it's, it's a very fascinating, right? He completed this in nineteen eighty-two, and it is, you know, I was glad when Rosemary's daughter came and dropped this off. I'm going to make it my mission to scan this and make it available to the public online, so they can read it. It's quite thick. And at this time, I'd like us all to remember, you know, our thoughts are with the entire Pierce family. I'd like to remember Rosemary Phillips Pierce for her obituaries published in the Mercury News, and I put some copies of it on the table to my right, over by the agenda packages. So if you'd like to pick one of those up on the way out. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to future agenda items?
Yes, of course.
Councilmember LeBeve?
You mentioned the old building. That's one of our items that we need to encounter. It's been empty for the last few years since the post office moved out and we've not used it. So it'd be great to see some use for it, if you can figure out what would be the best use, so we can make that available, whatever is appropriate. We do need to get that. We do need to get that, I think, I think, I've been going off about two series, and highly priced education, and at one time the fire department or somebody was going to be looking at it, but I told them that, but it, that's one item, uh, we have seen a series. The other item was a request I had to our council regarding a memo on the, when we could pass an ordinance requiring PJNE to cut the trees that are next to the wire, and that can cause fires or not. Hopefully, uh, we can address that issue, because we do have, we do have ordinances where weed ordinances and other, similar ordinances that require fire safety, so I really would like to see an ordinance that, since PJNE doesn't seem to, uh, get around to cutting trees, maybe we can cut it, cut it for them, and then send them to bill for it. So I'd like to see that. Third item, I think maybe time to investigate is, whether we have any kind of Airbnb ordinance, what kind of ordinance we need, and I don't, if you wonder what they're on it, but Airbnb is a thing to do, and some cities ban it openly, some, some cities have some guidelines and regulations, and what do you see, these are adopted, so people know whether they can do it or not do it.
Steve, did you come responsible?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lawler. Um, in reference to, Mr. Councilmember LA's, uh, comments regarding the building next door, I was going to send out something in the memo this week to the council. There is an agency that I worked with in my period, previous jurisdiction, I will be meeting with representatives of that agency, and they, um, are in the business of forming a public private partnership to rehabilitate, uh, underutilized city buildings and bring them into use for the community. So I will be sending out a memo, and I will be meeting with that individual on Friday in the office. And also in my previous jurisdiction, we did pass an Airbnb ordinance, so that's a great idea to bring forward. And when it comes to the trees, um, we will find out what we can do about that. I think.
Yeah, um, one of the issues we have, the, uh, ad hoc committee to deal with, council member Love and myself, to take a look at objective standards, uh, to figure out what the city can and should be doing related to objective standards, that can be an overlay on the building code to potentially keep growth, uh, in the spirit of Montesereno as we go forward. The ad hoc committee will be starting to move on that, and we do want to work closely with the city manager, city planner, and city attorney on this to determine what the options are for objective standards, and then ultimately what position Montesereno is going to take on objective standards. Are we going to push the envelope, uh, on the law as we, as we adopt our objective standards? Are we going to take a middle ground, or are we going to go to the opposite extreme of letting the state essentially take what it wants with no additional input from Montesereno? So we're going to be looking very closely at that. This is something I've been pushing for a year, we couldn't get traction on it before, council member Love begged to come in to put together the ad hoc committee, so we're planning to try to make this happen. We do need to move as quickly as we can before the next round of housing bills come down from the state and tell us that we can't have our own standards. So, um, that's going to be a major issue, and hopefully it can help raise some expertise to that, and also the city planner as well on that. So, uh, that's going to be kind of my signature issue, I hope, this year, working with, with council member Love.
Yeah, I wanted to talk about three things. The first one is, uh, we never got the, um, the code for the EV charging station, so I don't think anybody here can use that EV charging station still. The other one is, uh, the ClearGov implementation, we need to finish that and, and, uh, change some of the things on the website to make it more visible, and to put in some data on, on employee salaries, so we're not in this situation, how much does the city manager really pay, uh, in terms of a salary versus, versus benefits. And then the third one I wanted to, to, um, add was, uh, changes to the ad hoc committee that we can talk about next week, uh, may not be able to fulfill some of the things, but I also wanted to see if we could make some changes to some of the assignments.
Councilmember Love Day.
I'm good.
All right.
I'll save my minutes for next week.
Okay, thank you. Well then, at this point, we will adjourn the meeting of the city, city of Montesereno city council in memory of Rosemary Pierce, longtime resident, former employee, and former city manager of the city of Montesereno.